Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alodio Morish Stadium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC as the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 40, Class 40. What did we learn in Class 39? Well, we started learning about what's called the instructions. What instructions? The instructions that the Sultan of Morocco set forth for all the Christian powers to come to the table as he's reigning in the order. But also the Sultan himself had to maintain that same equality. So the Sultan along with the Christian powers were now reigning in the order. Order what? Treaties, Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land. So what should Moors take away from Class 39? We gotta start checking the boxes and following the instructions. Whose instructions? The Sultan. So since Moors say enforce the Constitution, enforce the Constitution, enforce the Constitution. Well, let's talk about that one. Here's the Constitution of the United States of America. At least that's what the cover page says. But when you turn to the Constitution and read it, it immediately starts talking about the United States obligations. See, they intermix the words in this Constitution and most Moors aren't catching this. So when you get over to Article 6, Clause 2, it still says Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land. See, no matter what the Congress have done to their Constitution, the one thing that has not changed and has remained the same, that the treaty is the supreme law of the land. And that's what Moors need to focus in on, alright? So if we're gonna say enforce the Constitution, well, there's two things that we only need to know about this Constitution. Article 3, Section 2, Diversity of State. Okay, Moors, you say enforce the Constitution, then where's your state? My question to the Moors is this, what is the name of your state provincial government? And then tell me about your website so I can take a look at your public law, alright? What's the next box we look at in terms of this Constitution? Whether it's the Constitution of the United States of America or the Constitution of the United States? We're looking at Article 6, Clause 2 that says what? Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land, right? Okay, so the Moors gotta ask themselves, since you've been saying enforce the Constitution, are you enforcing Article 6, Clause 2, which is Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land? Or have the Moors been denying their own justice? I'll be more specific. Here's the deal. Article 6, Clause 2, Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land, that means now you simply put this Constitution down, you go into treaties. What do the treaties say? Okay, we're learning Act of Al-Jasara is 1906. And what they call the general provisions, which is Articles 120 through 123, starts talking about the instructions in addition to the preamble. So the preamble and what they call Chapter 7, General Provisions, starts going right into the instructions. So have the Moors been following the instructions of the treaties? There's a high probability the answer is no. But yet, Moors can point out problems. Well, if you're gonna point out problems, you also have to point out solutions. So let's keep talking about the solutions. Let's keep talking about the instructions so that way Moors can come back into what they call law. What law? The law of the treaties. Because as of right now, the laws, the Moors are what you call working outside of the contract. What contract? The treaties. And if you're working outside of the contract, that means you're what? An outlaw. Anybody's working outside the contract is an outlaw. So all the Moors have to create, correct their status. When you correct your status, now you're working back inside of the law. Now you can enforce law because the treaties must, excuse me, the parties must be known. So let's talk about that today, about the parties, about the instructions, and what is it that our obligation is to Moors? They know what the obligation is? When next time you pick up this Constitution, enforce this Constitution on yourself. Don't enforce it on the Congress, enforce it on yourself. What do I mean? Enforce Article 6, Clause 2, Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land? Okay, enforce the treaty on yourself. What do I mean? Start checking the boxes because the treaties talking about statehood. I'll prove that today. So what are we really going to talk about today other than the treaties? We're gonna talk about what's called the triple principle. The triple principle is what the ICJ talks about. The triple principle is what the treaties talk about. The triple principle is about what you call common law, matriarchal law, treaty law. This is the supreme law of the land, right here. It's all bundled in these three principles, and we're gonna talk about that today. We're gonna prove to you that the United Nations Charter is part and parcel to the Moors. We're gonna prove to you and qualify that the Charter of the United Nations isn't doing nothing but maintaining the treaties of the Moors. That the Charter of the United Nations is nothing but Knights Templars to protect the Moors' estate. I'll prove that to you today, alright? Let's get into it. We're gonna open up by talking about ANPAC's Constitution. So there's Class 40. What have we been talking about? Why did ANPAC take the time to ratify a Constitution? Why did ANPAC take the time to accede to treaties through our state? Why did ANPAC turn around and then deposit our treaties, our legislation law, with the Secretary General of the United Nations and the Secretariat? We'll talk about that today. We'll tie all these things in, okay? Several subject matters. Let's get started. In Class 39, I was making what's called correlations. Correlations between the Act of Al-Jasara and the Charter of the United Nations. I had said in some previous classes ago that the Charter was an attachment to the Moroccan Empire, and that Moors are part and parcel to the Charter, and the Charter was part and parcel to the Moors. We'll keep proving that. That this Charter is all about protecting the sacred trust of the Moors. Let's keep studying. Act of Al-Jasara is 1906. Then we've got the Charter of the United Nations, okay? We'll be talking about those two documents. But before we jump into the documents, we gotta go over a couple of definitions, alright? Correlation. Correlation is the word of the day today. Father, Mother, read the definition.
A mutual relationship or connection between two or more things. Research showed a clear correlation between recession and levels of property crime. Synonyms, connection, association, link, tie-in, tie-up, relation, relationship, interrelationship, interdependence, interconnection, interaction, correspondence, parallel, equivalence, reciprocity, mutuality, occurrence. The process of establishing a relationship or connection between two or more measures. Statistics, the interdependence of variable quantities.
Alright, thank you, Mother. Correlation. Correlation, right? Is a mutual relationship or connection between two or more things. So the Charter of the United Nations and the Act of Al-Jasara and all the previous treaties are a correlation of each other. The United Nations Charter is doing nothing but copy paste of the Act of Al-Jasara because the Charter is maintaining equality and what's called the sacred trust of all the treaties of the Moors. I'll keep talking about that today. So as you can see, correlation, right? It's a relationship, it's a connection. Connection, association, a link, tie-in, tie-up, relation, relationship, interrelationship, interdependence, interconnection, interaction, correspondence, parallel, 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 okay? The process of establishing a relationship or connection between two or more measures. The Charter of the United Nations has, is measuring itself based upon the Moroccan treaties. We'll talk about that today. Correlation is a compound word. Core and relation. What's the core principles of treaties? Mother, if I can have you read this for me, please?
The Sultan, the Moors, and the Empire of Morocco as a collective, i.e. the principal body politic is the Moors' government.
Okay, so when talking core, correlation, what is core? Compound word, core. We're talking about core values, core principles, core. So the core principles is the Sultan, the Moors, and the Empire of Morocco as a collective, i.e. the prince of pow, prince of pow body politic is the Moors' government. So all the politics of the Moors, the living people, the Moors' government is still the prince of pow because we're the peak of all of it. We oversee all treaties on planet Earth. Especially when Christians are performing business in Morocco, we're always the prince of pow based upon our principles. But when it comes to commerce, commercial commerce, we're the prince of pow. But we are always the sovereign. We are always the superior because of our treaties. I'll keep proving that to you today. Okay, now let's look at relation. What's the relation? Okay, Mother, if you can read that?
What's the relation? The fully ratified sovereign Moors' treaties with the Christian powers have resolved and have agreed to the triple principles of the Moors' empire, and the Christians are an attachment to, i.e. a correlation to the Mohammedan Moroccan law.
Okay, so what's that? Correlation. We're gonna talk about that a lot today, correlation. The relation, core relation, the relation is what? The fully ratified sovereign Moors' treaties. That's the relation. What's the relation between Moors and Christians? The relationship is the treaties. The fully ratified sovereign Moors' treaties with the Christian powers have resolved. Where do we see that? In the Act of Al-Jasara, have resolved. Where else do we see that? In the Charter, we'll see it just a moment. And have agreed to the triple principles of the Moors' empire, and the Christians are an attachment to, i.e. a correlation to the Mohammedan Moroccan law. I'll prove that to you today. We'll come back to this. Just remember, I'm showing this to you on the front end. Mother, can you read this for me, please?
The Charter of the United Nations, 1945, is in fact a correlation to the triple principles of the Moors' government in Morocco. The Charter is obligated to safeguard the sacred trust of the Moors until the Moors can make a demand as the competent state authorities.
Okay. That's a bold statement that I'm making. Well, I gotta back that up, don't I? As you already know, ANPAC always has reference points. ANPAC always will qualify what we say. I've already been leading up to this, showing you already correlations between the Charter and the Act of Al-Jasara. We're gonna keep doing that, okay? Now let me share this with you. Now, this is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship signed in Tripoli, November 4th, 1796. Why am I sharing this with you? Because in the Treaty of Tripoli, 1796, Article 11, this is when President Barack H. Obama of the United States and the President of the United States of America, two separate entities, went to Cairo, Egypt, Egypt in the year 2009, and told the audience about this article. And it went over everybody's head. As soon as he finished in Cairo, Egypt, he came right back and signed what's called the Rights of Indigenous People in 2010. Keep in, keep in mind, the Rights of Indigenous People came out in the year 2007 from the United Nations. President George Bush didn't sign it on an international level through the United States of America. He never signed it. When Barack H. Obama came into office, Barack H. Obama signed it on an international level through the United States of America. Listen. But when Barack H. Obama signed it as the United States of America, after that, did the United States ratify? You gotta catch what I just said. Keep in mind, Barack H. Obama at this time in 2010, he controlled both the executive branch, the House of Representatives, and the Senate. Nancy Pelosi, Mitch McConnell, never picked up a bill to ratify the Rights of Indigenous People through the government of the United States. They never sent Barack H. Obama, who's the President of the United States, and the United States of America, two separate entities. Nancy Pelosi and Mitch McConnell never picked up that declaration and adopted it or ratified it through the United States. Why? Because they didn't want to be held to those obligations. So as Moors start to study, go back and study on this, on what's called the Department of State's website of the United States. It'll show you what's been ratified, what hasn't been ratified. Anything you see that's not ratified, you know that's a weakness for the United States. They haven't ratified a lot of declarations. They stay away from declarations. Did you know that the United States of America and the United States has not ratified and consented through the United States, the Vienna Convention of 1969? Well, why is that? Because it's kryptonite to them. Anything they do not consent and ratify to through their state, United States, you should know to double down, triple down on that declaration because there's something about it that they know undermines them, decolonizes them, alright? That's one point I wanted to let the Moors know about. Always study to see what the United States has ratified to and what they haven't ratified. And whatever they haven't ratified, you double and triple down on those declarations and enforce them on them. Because what happens is this. Anything they don't ratify and consent to through their states, that's like a boxer with his hands down. His chin is up. See, they can't defend themselves if they haven't ratified the declaration or treaty or convention. When they haven't done that, their hands are down and their chin is up. They're wide open. When Moors now start to restore the states, we start to check boxes, we start to ratify the treaties, declarations, conventions through our states, we'll be able to utilize them as our offense and our defense. Whereas the United States of America and the United States can't defend themselves if they have not ratified and consented to said convention, declaration, or treaty. That must be understood. So Barack H. Obama is trying to point something out to you. Let's look at what he tried to point out. Mother, if you can read Article 11?
Article 11, as the government of the United States of America is not in any sense founded on the Christian religion, as it has in itself no character of enmity against the laws, religion, or tranquility of Muslim men. And as the state, said states, never have entered into any war or act of hostility against any Mohammedan nation, it is declared by the parties that no pretext arising from religious opinions shall ever produce an interruption of the harmony existing between the two countries.
Okay, thank you, Mother. Let's break this down real quick, and we'll move on. Article 11, as the government of the United States of America is not in any sense founded on the Christian religion, and it, and, and it has in itself no character of enmity against the laws, religion, or tranquility of Muslim men. And as the said states, never have entered into any war or act of hostility against any Mohammedan nation, it is declared by the parties that no pretext arising from the religious opinions shall ever produce an interruption of the harmony existing between the two countries. What's that? What's important here to understand? Why did Barack H. Obama point this out to the world? It's because of this. The laws, the laws of rule. The Muslims. Who the Muslims? The Moors. What else? What about the laws? He's pointing out the treaties. The treaties, the treaties of Supreme Law of the Land. And who are the authors of the treaties? The Moors. So Barack H. Obama is pointing this out, as the, as the government of the United States of America is not in any sense founded on the Christian religion. So what is it founded on then? Muslim, law, Mohammedan law, matriarchal law, common law, jurisprudence. You always gotta go back to the sovereign, the author of everything when you're trying to enforce law. You go back to the beginning. Barack H. Obama was trying to point this out. And then he goes and signed the Rights of Indigenous People. So he's trying to point out the Rights of Indigenous People. That means you go back to the beginning. Indigenous means the beginning, right? Okay. You go back to the beginning of what? The laws. The laws of rule. The Muslim men, who's the Muslim? Moors. The Mohammedan nation, who's that? Moors. He was pointing this out to us. This went right over a lot of people's heads. Let's continue.
What, what is the Mohammedan law, i.e. the triple principle? One, sovereignty and independence, Alodio Moors states. Two, integrity of dominion, Alodio Moors states. Three, economic liberty without inequality, transfer of wealth, trust.
Alright, start right there, okay? Let's slide this on down a little bit. I'm giving you a quick brief. Then we're gonna get into some deeper studies. But I gotta show you some words first, and that way when you see the words, when we go through these treaties and stuff, you start recognizing things, okay? What is the Mohammedan law? I.e. the triple principle, because the triple principle is the Mohammedan law. Where do we see the triple principle? In the Act of Al-Jasara preamble. We'll, we'll read on that today. In the Act of Al-Jasara, it points out three different principles, the triple principle. We'll talk about that a lot today. The first principle was the sovereignty and independence, which is called Alodio Moors states. So sovereign states are sovereign, states are independent. Alodio Moors states, that's what that's about. What's the second principle? Integrity of dominion, what's that? Alodio Moors estates. Okay? That's dominion, we're talking about land. Okay, the land is the state, okay? Then the third principle was economic liberty without inequality. What is that? Transfer of wealth or transfer of trust. Economics, Mother?
Economics, noun. The branch of knowledge concerned with the production, consumption, and transfer of wealth. Synonyms, financial affairs, money matters, pecuniary matters, fiscal matters, money management, commerce, business, investment, banking, accounting. The condition, condition of a region or group as regards material prosperity.
Alright, thank you, Mother. Economics. We see this a word a lot. Charter, declarations, treaties. What's this word economics about? How we look the word up? Okay, let's read it. Economics, the branch of knowledge concerned with the production, consumption, and transfer of wealth. Economics is about the transfer of wealth. It's about what? Synonyms, financial affairs, money matters, pecuniary matters, fiscal, fiscal, fisk, fiscal matters, money management, commerce, business, investment, banking, accounting. The condition of a region or group as regards material prosperity. Where we see the word prosperity? Act of Al-Jasara, 1906. We're talking correlations, we're learning words right now. Okay, let's get into the meat of things. The Charter of the United Nations is a correlation to the Act of Al-Jasara and all the Moroccan treaties. It's what you call the sacred trust. I'll prove that to you. Okay, Charter of the United Nations, let's get into it. Let's go ahead and read the preamble. Okay, Mother?
We, the peoples of the United Nations, determine to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war which twice in our lifetime has brought untold sorrow to mankind, and to reaffirm faith and fundamental human rights, and the dignity and worth of the human person, and the equal rights of men and women, and of nations large and small, and to establish conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties and other sources of international law can be, can be maintained, and to promote social progress and better standards of life and larger freedom.
Alright, thank you very much. Mother, what is this, I mean, excuse me, this charter is about what? What is it really about? It's about what? It's about establishing conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties. Let's read it again. What is the charter about? Establishing conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties. Let's read it again. The charter is about what? Establishing conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties. What treaties? Moroccan treaties. I'll prove that to you today. Alright, let's continue. Okay, Mother, if you can read that next, and for the ends, for these ends.
And for these ends, to practice tolerance and live together in peace with one another as good neighbors, and to unite our strength to maintain international peace and security, and to ensure by the acceptance of principles and institutions and methods that on-force shall not be used, saved in the common interest, and to employ international machinery for promotion of the economic and social advancement of all peoples.
Okay, so in the preamble, they're talking about treaties, and now they're talking about what's called economics. Economics, we just read economics, right? Transfer of wealth, right? And social advancement of all peoples. So economic, economic, we just read that. Transfer of wealth. Well, how do you transfer wealth? Well, somebody gotta be wealthy in, in order to transfer some wealth. Who is it being transferred to? Someone else, we'll talk about that today. Alright, listen. Okay, read this title for me, Mother.
Have resolved to combine our efforts to accomplish these aims.
Okay, stop right there. This is where we kind of left off of when we was reading a little bit about the preamble of the United Nations Charter. I was going back and forth, right? Have resolved, where do we see this word have resolved? Okay, now we go over to the Act of Al-Jasara, 1906. Have resolved, listen. You go right into what they call the preamble, okay? We got the preamble up, alright? So what do we see here? The word prosperity, right? So we already started to see some of the words that was in that correlation when I started breaking down definitions. Watch this. Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order. So the United Nations Charter is reigning in order, and so is the Act of Al-Jasara is reigning in the order, okay? Peace and prosperity in Morocco. So it's about peace, Treaty of Peace and Friendship, and prosperity because all treaties are about al-ative commerce, peace, and prosperity, which is money, wealth, trust, wealth. And recognizing that attainment thereof can only be affected by the means of the introduction or reforms based upon the triple principle. We're talking triple principle now. What's the triple principle? Well, the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty, the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, and the economic liberty without any inequality. It can't be any inequality, okay? Now, what do we learn about? The triple principles. What are the triple principles? Sovereignty and independence, which is state rights. What's the second principle? Integrity of domains, which is a state, which is trust law. What's the third one? Economic liberty without inequality, what's that? That's prosperity because economics is about a transfer of wealth. That's prosperity, that's money, right? We'll keep learning. Now, watch this. Have resolved, watch. Now we go down to page 8. So the word have resolved. Here's where you find the word have resolved. Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco, and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty, the Sultan. The integrity of his The integrity of his domains. And economic liberty without any inequality, have resolve. Have resolve. Have resolve. Wait a minute. Have resolve. Have resolve. So we're at have resolve, they're getting that from the treaty. Of Act of Al-Dusaras nineteen oh six. Let's continue, let's learn some more. Look at this right here. Okay, mother, if you can read this part right here.
Accord- accordingly, our respective governments, the representatives assembled in the city of San Francisco, uh, San Francisco. Who have exhibited their full powers found to be in good and due form, have agreed to the present charter of the United Nations and do hereby establish. An in, an international organization to be known as the United Nations.
Alright, so where, look at this. Right here. Who have exhibited, let's increase it. Who have exhibited their full powers found to be. And good. And due form. What's happening? Listen. Where do we find this at? Exhibit their full powers, listen. Act of Al-Dusaras nineteen oh six. Now we're gonna go down to eight, page eight. Okay, Morse. So right here in the preamble of the Act of Al-Dusaras nineteen oh six. It says, who furnished with full powers. Which were found in good and due form. Have. In conformity with the programming upon which His Sharika and Majesty and the powers have agreed. Remember I said have agreed. Successive, successively discussed and adopted. Now watch. Let's look at the comparison, the correlation. The correlation. Right here. Who have exhibited their full powers found to be, let's stop right there. Full powers found to be. Were exhibited with full powers which were found in good and due form, listen. Full powers found to be and good. And due form, can you see that? And due form, try to make sure the viewers at home can see it. And due form, found to be in due, in, in good and due form, listen. Were furnished with the full powers which were found to be in good and due form. Have agreed, look. And due form. Have agreed. They're getting these words directly from the Act of Al-Dusaras nineteen oh six, that must be understood. Act of Al-Dusaras. Let's go down to now, chapter seven. Chapter seven. Chapter seven. Chapter seven of the Act of Al-Dusaras, we're talking correlations. Stay with me, have patience with me, correlation. Chapter seven, which is article one twenty, general provisions, general provisions, let's go back up to the United Nations Charter. Now we're gonna go down. Section one oh two. Article one oh two. Okay. United Nations Charter. United Nations Charter. Article one oh two. Miscellaneous provisions. Miscellaneous provisions, let's go back over to nineteen oh six. General provisions. But. Chapter seven, general provision, what do we learn about articles? One twenty to one twenty-three, gave instructions about ratifying the treaties through your constitution? And then depositing it with what? Madrid, but the United Nations says bring it to who? Secretary General, the secretariat, let's learn about that, okay? So over here, chapter seven, article one twenty. And one twenty-one. Listen. Article one twenty-one, the present general act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state. The ratification shall be deposited. At Madrid as soon as practical. Practical. And at the latest by December thirty-first, et cetera, listen. Now we'll go back over to the charter. Miscellaneous provisions. Motherfucker, have you read this?
Every treaty and every international agreement entered into by any member of the United Nations after the present charter comes into force. Shall, shall as soon as possible be registered with the secretariat and published by it.
Okay. Alright, so right here. Every treaty and every international agreement entered into by any member of the United Nations. After the present charter has come into, to force. Shall as soon as possible. Be registered with the secretariat and published by it, let's go over to the Act of Al-Dusaras nineteen oh six. Article one twenty-one, the present general act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state. The ratification shall be deposited at Madrid, Madrid as soon as. Possible. You see what they're doing? These are correlations. They're grabbing these words, because these are the instructions. Their charter is a correlation of the Moroccan treaty. Okay, let's go back to the charter. Section two. Listen.
No party to any such treaty or international agreement which has not been registered in accordance with the provisions of paragraph one. One of this article may invoke that treaty or agreement before any organ of the United Nations.
So what does that mean? If you haven't ratified it, you can't enforce it, listen. Section two, no party. To any such treaty or international agreement which has not been registered. In accordance with the provisions of paragraph one. Of this article may invoke. Of this article may invoke that treaty or agreement before any organ of the United Nations, I mean, you can't enforce it. Okay, let's go back over to nineteen oh six. What is, what is the Sultan saying? Okay, well first the Sultan says what? A process C verbal shall be made of such deposit. Insertified copy sent to each of the signatory powers. Through the diplomatic channel. Okay, then you get into one twenty-two, and it's gonna now repeat to you the provision, that if you don't ratify it, you can't enforce it. Okay, mother, if you can read that, article one twenty-two.
The present general act shall enter into effect as soon as all of the ratifications shall have been deposited. And at latest on December thirty-first, one thousand nine hundred and six. In case of special legislative. Uh, uh, measures which may necessary in certain countries to ensure the application to the nationals. Living in Morocco of certain stipulations of this present general act shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification. These stipulations shall only become applicable in respect to them after the legislative measures above referred to shall have been promi- uh, promul- promulgated.
Mm-hmm, so that means you can't enforce it unless you ratified it, let's go back. United Nations Charter. Let's go back. Article one oh two. Section two. No party to any such treaty or international agreement which has not been registered. In any accordance with the provisions of paragraph one of. A treaty. Or article. Of this article may invoke that treaty or agreement before any organ of the United Nations, what does that mean? You haven't ratified the deposit with the United Nations secretariat, you can't enforce it, isn't the same thing that, that the Sultan said? Nineteen oh six. Right here. In case of special legislation measures which may be necessary in certain countries to be ensure the application to their nationals. Living in Morocco of certain stipulations of this present general act. Shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification, so if you haven't ratified and deposited with this, with the, um, with Madrid back then, national United Nations, keep up. These stipulations shall only become applicable. In the respect to them after legislative measure above referred to shall have been promulgated. So as you can see, we're getting these instructions directly as a correlation from the Act of Al-Dusaras, that the charter is already talking about these things. And what they call the general provisions. Miscellaneous provisions of the charter. And the general provisions. Just a moment. And the general provisions. Of the Act of Al-Dusaras nineteen oh six. So what's happening? We're gonna go deeper now. Listen. Charter of the United Nations. Now you go over to. Article fifty-five. Let's go to article fifty-five. What's happening? They're gonna start disclosing things to you, remember we looked up the word.
This is Al-Dusaras.
This is United Nations Charter. Nineteen forty-five, chapter nine. Remember we looked up the word economic? It's about wealth transfer. International economic and social cooperation. What is United Nations Charter doing? They're pointing out the obligations of the economics. Because the Sultan was talking about economics, what we're talking about? Economic liberty without any quality, we're talking about economic, it's wealth. Okay? Alright, mother, if I can have you read article fifty-five?
With a view to the creation of conditions of stability and well-being which are necessary for peaceful and friendly relations among nations. Based on respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples, the United Nations shall promote.
Okay. So article fifty-five, with a view to the creation of conditions of stability and well-being which are necessary for peaceful and friendly relations. Among nations based on respect for the principle. What's the principles? Here's the triple principle, they're talking about these triple principles, what's the triple principle? Sovereignty and independence, which is state rights. Number two, integrity of domains, which is a state trust, we're gonna talk about trust. And number three, economic liberty without any quality, which is prosperity, we're gonna talk about that. So article fifty-five is now starting to talk about what they call self-determination from who? The peoples, but it's based upon the principles, principles of what? The Act of Al-Dusaras nineteen oh six, Moroccan treaties, which is the triple principle, we're gonna learn more about that. Okay? Can we continue reading?
A, higher standards of living, fully employment, and conditions of economic and social progress and development. And B, solutions of international economic, uh, social health and related problems.
Okay?
And national culture and educational cooperation. And C, universal respect for and observance of human rights and fundamental freedoms for all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion.
Alright, so as you can see, they keep talking about this economics. Keep talking about economics. Self-determination. What is this economics about? Wealth. Okay? Where else we keep seeing this word economics? Let's go over to the rights indigenous people, right? Article five, indigenous people have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic. Social and cultural institutions while retaining their rights to participate fully if they so choose. In the political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state, okay? Go back to the charter. What are they talking about? International economic and social cooperation. This is why in the rights of indigenous people, article one, it tells you go back and read the charter, it's trying to tell you something. There are some rights for indigenous people under economics. But the economics is tied to a trust, let's learn about the trust. Now we go down to article seventy-three, article seventy-three, United Nations.
Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration. Of territories whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government, recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount. And accept as a sacred trust. The obligation to promote the utmost within the system, system of international peace and security established by the present charter. The well-being of the inhabitants of these territories and to this end.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, so what are we talking about here? Once again, they keep talking about what? To recognize the principle, what's the principle? The principle is the triple principles of sovereignty and independence, integrity of domains, and economic liberty without any quality. Now all that's based upon the trust, the trust, where's the trust? Let's talk about the trust. So here we go, members of the United Nations which have assumed responsibility for the administration of territories. Which people have not gained yet attained full measure of self-government. Recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount, which is the treaties, the paramount is the treaties. And accept as sacred trust, you see that sacred trust? Sacred trust, where's the sac- why are they talking about the sacred trust? What's a sacred trust? Of the rights of indigenous people of this article, what are they talking about? They're talking about the state, and they're also talking about what? This is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, article twenty-two. Mother, if you can read this for me, article twenty-two, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, add seventeen eighty-seven, same article, continue.
If an American citizen shall die in our country and no will shall appear, the coun- the council shall take possession of his effects. And if there shall be no counsel, the effects shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust. Until a party shall appear who has a right to demand them. But if their heir to the person deceased be present, the property shall be delivered to him without interruption. And if a will shall appear, the property shall be seen agreeable to that will as soon as the counsel, consul shall declare the validity thereof.
Alright. So the word trust, trust, right? Worthy of trust, what's the trust? The trust is for the trustees that are overseeing the Moroccan empire, let's read it. Gotta talk about this trust, they come up with sacred trust, they're talking about these treaties, Lord. Talking about our treaties right in front of us. Article twenty-two. If an American citizen. Shall die in our country and no will shall appear, so you gotta understand. All treaties are what you call enlightened men. Enlightened and vice versa. Vice versa. So this treaty is about, if a Moor dies, then someone needs to take his effects as well, okay? So if an American citizen, which is the, the colonist, let's switch this word now, so if a Moor. Shall die in our country. And no will shall appear, the consul shall take possession of his effects. So what consul took effect, took possession of the facts? The colonists took possession of the effects of the Moors. Okay? Take possession of his effects. And if there shall be no counsel. Remember, there was no counsel to represent the Moor, because the Moor's got overthrown in their government, we didn't have no counsel. The effects shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust. So our state. Is now in the hands of some person of trust. The colonists have set up a trust. To hold on to our state. But they know under what's called equality, they have to give it back to us if we come back and become the competent state authority to make a demand, watch this. So some person worthy of trust, until the party shall appear who has a right to demand them. But if the heir to the person deceased be present, the property shall be delivered to him without interruption. And if a will shall appear, the property shall be seen agreeable to that will as soon as the consul shall declare the validity thereof. So therefore, what you gotta understand is this. So therefore, what you gotta understand is this. The Moors were not the competent party to make a claim in the last hundred years plus. Because we didn't have no counsel, because the colonists ran us out of government. The only way to make a competent claim, you must have statehood. The Moors had states, they had governments, once they ran out of government, they had no more counsel. So what happened? The Moor's counsel couldn't make a validity. A validity claim to our effects. So therefore, all of our effects went into a trust, why am I putting that out? Because United Nations Charter. Is pointing out this sacred trust. The trust is about the treaty. The treaty is about the Moroccan's land and the Moroccan's government. That if you colonize someone, they have every right to make a claim of sovereignty. Post-limine per consequenti, through statehood to make a competent claim, but the Moors haven't been competent because we have not ratified the states. And the Sultan gave specific instructions that Moors have to come back to a Moroccan government and consent in order to enforce our rights of the treaty. That was Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty. Then he reinforced that in nineteen oh six and what you call the general provisions, said, okay, constitution. Your law, that constitution. Now come back and accede to it, ratify it through your state, the treaties, and then deposit that with. Madrid, I E, United Nations Charter Secretary. So the trust is very important to understand what's happening right here, sacred trust, okay? So we got sacred trust, trust right there, right? Nineteen oh six, excuse me. So we got the trust here. Then we've got the treaty talking about the trust, right? Who else started talking about this trust, really quickly, listen. Really quickly. This is the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples. What does that mean? The Declaration of Granting of Independence to who? Colonized countries and their people. This declaration is about the General Assembly Resolution fifteen fourteen, that's important to understand. Resolution fifteen fourteen of the year nineteen sixties, it's a very important declaration, let's scroll on down. Scroll down, that's the preamble, we're gonna get back to this. Article five. This is what the Declaration starts talking about in nineteen sixty. Mother, if you could read article five real quick?
Immediate steps shall be taken in trust in non-self-governing territories, territories or or all other territories. Which have not yet attained independence to transfer all powers to the peoples of both territories. Without any conditions or reservations in accordance with their freely expressed will and desire. Without any distinct distinction as to race, creed, or color. In order to enable them to enjoy complete independence and freedom.
Alright, so in this declaration of nineteen sixty, it's pointing out what? This trust again. What is it about this trust? What are they talking about? Look what, how they tied the word trust there, look, it says what, in trust in non-self-governing territories. What was it doing, that's a correlation. Correlation back to what? The Charter. Okay, now you go back to the Charter. Go back to the Charter, article seventy-three. It's about what? Non-self-governing territories, right, non-self-governing territories. Non-self-governing territories and the trust is about what? So the non-self-governing territory is what, the colonized lands, right, of the Moors. But it's also talking about what? The trust, the trust is what? Okay, the treaty, the word trust, article twenty-two, talking about the trust. Now you come back over here to United Nations Charter, it keeps talking about what? The sacred trust. You gotta see the correlations that's going on right now, they're talking about a trust. Okay, let's go deeper, watch this. Let's go deeper. Look, okay, get article seventy-three, right, I know that's small, let me increase a little bit. Article seventy-three, okay? Once you get through reading article seventy-three, we read this before. You go right into article seventy-four, what does article seventy-four say? After you've talked about the rights of indigenous people of non-self-governing territories, just gotta go back to the indigenous people, I E, the Moors. Now article seventy-four, we just read seventy-three, let's go into seventy-four, mother.
Members of the United Nations also agree that their policy in respect of the territories to which the chapter applies. No less than in respect of their metropolitan areas must be based on the general principle of good neighborliness. Due accounts being taken of the interest and well-being of the rest of the world in social, social, economic, and commercial matters.
Uh-oh. Here we go again, talking about what? Principle, here we go again, we're talking about what? Principles of good neighborliness. The principles, the triple principles, the triple principles. The principles, now they keep talking about what again? These economics again, economic and social and commercial matters, right? That's article seventy-four, now watch, this is where it gets interesting. We just read. Chapter seventy-three, rights of indigenous people, self, non-self-governing territories. Article seventy-four says now you must maintain this. Watch what article seventy-five immediately goes into, watch. We just worried about the word trust. They just finished talking about non-self-governing territories of colonized lands that the indigenous people get to come back to make a claim. To get back to statehood and they go right into article seventy-four, immediately just talking about a trusteeship. Now they're gonna tell you why the Charter is really enforced, what is the Charter about? The Charter is to protect the sacred trust of the treaties of the Moors, watch this. Okay, mother, chapter seven, go ahead and read the title please.
International trusteeship system. The United Nations shall establish under its authority an international trustee system, trusteeship system. For the administration and supervision of such territories as may be placed there under by subsequent individual agreements. These territories are hereinafter referred to as trust territories.
Article seventy-five is about what, where's it about again? Title matter. International trusteeship, Thomas M. Bay, I was talking about putting things in trust, well guess what? The colonists have put the Moors' estate and effects into a trust. And they're overseeing that trust. And they're trying to tell the Moors how to come back and make a competent claim to our own trust. They're disclosing it, but in the meantime, they're overseeing it as trustees and brokers, listen. Article seventy-five, listen. The United Nations shall establish under its authority an international trusteeship, see what the United Nations Charter is about? I'll read it again, the United Nations shall establish under its authority an international trusteeship. System for the administration and supervision of such territories, what's such territories? Territories of the Moors, let's continue. As may be placed there under by subsequent individual agreements. These territories hereinafter referred to as trust territories. The trust of the Moors. Well, what did we learn about the word economics? Economics is what? Let's go back. Let's go back. Economics, the branch of knowledge, Moors come back in knowledge concerning with the production, consumption, and transfer of wealth. They're holding on to our wealth. Till we come back and make a competent claim to our trust. But how do you make a claim to the trust, okay, you gotta go back to the treaty, treaty supreme of all the land, let's go. How do you make a competent claim to the trust, okay, they give you the instructions, Moors gotta follow instructions. Have Moors been enforcing the constitution, article six clause two of enforcing the treaty, okay, we're about to find out. Okay, I know that's a little small for Moors. Article twenty-two, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six. If, if a Moor. Shall die in our country and no will shall appear, the consul shall take possession of his effects. Who took possession of our effects? The United Nations Charter of nineteen forty-five have taken possession of our effects because they created a trusteeship for what? Non-self-governing territory, let's go back so you can understand where I'm coming from. These territories are hereinafter referred to as trust territories. Trust territories. Trust territories. That's nineteen forty-five, this is eighteen thirty-six, okay, so what's happening? Right here, the consul shall take possession of his effects. So a trust was created. United States of America is overseeing because they're in the jurisdiction. But the Charter is also overseeing because they created a trust to oversee non-self-governing territories. Until the Moors can make a competent claim, how do they do that, they'll tell you. And if there should be no counsel, the effects shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust. Who's got the worthy trust, United Nations Charter overseeing it. Until the party shall appear who has the right to demand them, how do we ha- how do we have the right to demand it? What's the right of demand, it's gonna tell you. But if the heir to the person deceased be present, the property shall be delivered to him without interruption. And if a will shall appear, the property shall descend agreeable to that will as soon as the consul. Shall declare the validity thereof, who's the consul? Consul court. Of the state. The Moors never had a competent state, we never had counsel because you can't just see you're the consul general, you just can't see you're a consul court without a state. Moors have to be competent, understand statehood, because that's the only way to make the, the validity thereof is through counsel. You gotta come back in statehood in order to make a claim to the trust, the trust Moors. The trust, the trust is in the hands of United Nations Charter. And right now, the guardian overseeing it jurisdiction-wise is United States of America. Because they're the last Christian power in this land claiming a privileged jurisdiction in Morocco. But the Charter of United Nations is protecting the sacred trust of the territories. On behalf of the indigenous people, I E, the Moors. And if the Charter now is a correlation to the Moroccan treaties. Then you now, now you know specifically, if since they're using the verbiage of the Act Al Jusseris. Then the sacred trust is the Act Al Jusseris. Because the Madrid is now replaced by the United Nations. Charter and all their organs. So the sacred trust is the treaties of Moors. And the land of the Moors. United Nations Charter. Article seventy-five. Let's read article seventy-six, mother, article seventy-six.
The basic objectives of the trusteeship system.
Okay.
In accordance with the purposes of the United Nations laid down in article one of the present Charter shall be. A, to further international peace and security. B, to promote the political, economic, social, and educational advancement of the inhabitants of the trust territories. And their progressive, progressive development towards self-government or independence as may be appropriate to the particular circumstances of each territory. And its peoples and the freely expressed wishes of the peoples concerned and as may be provided by the terms of each trusteeship agreement.
Stop, let's go back, what did we just learn? In accordance with the purpose of the United Nations laid down in article one of the present Charter shall be, A. To further international peace and security, to further what? The enforcement of the treaty, the treaties of what? Peace and friendship. Section B, listen. To promote the political, economic, social, and educational advancements of inhabitants in the trust. Territories, well wait, who are they talking about? Okay, let's go back over to rights of indigenous people, article five, it's the reason why I keep having Moors keep reading article five. Article five, indigenous people have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions. It's about what, political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state, gotta come back in the statehood, listen. To mo- promote the political, economic, social, and educational advancements. All of this is off of article seventy-three, rights of indigenous people for the more non-self-governing territories. Why? Because the colonists know they're obligated to the tri- triple principle, principles. That they're obligated to the Act Al Jusseris and all of the Moroccan treaties, you gotta see what's happening. And until the Moors come back and make a competent claim, then they're gonna hold on to the trust. But they're fully disclosing to the Moor, hey man, y'all gotta trust, but y'all gotta come back like everybody else through statehood to make that claim. Let's read again, section B, this is about trusteeship, they put our states and effects in a trust. To promote the political, economic, social, and educational advancement of the inhabitants of the trust territories. And their progressive, who's the there? Moors, their progressive development towards self-government. Or independence as may be appropriate to their particular circumstances of each. Territory and its peoples and the freely expressed wishes. Of the peoples concerned and as may be provided by the terms of each trusteeship agreement. They got the Moors' effects, article twenty-two, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, tied for the trust. The United Nations Charter is a referee, I E, a compliance department to oversee the Moor's trust, why? Because the colonists have an obligation to the Act Al Jusseris nineteen oh six and all of the Moroccan treaties. They're maintaining that obligation, why? There would be no Christian powers. There would be no Christian treaties if it wasn't for Moroccan treaties. They understand the core relationship, what's the core, Moroccan treaty is the foundation to everything they have. They're always going back to the sovereign because that's where everything started, the origin of all of this. And they know that they've colonized the Moors. But the Moors, although they're in a shallow grave, they're not dead. They've just been cast dead at sea under a steep hypoplication. But the only way the Moors can get out of a steep hypoplication status, we gotta do it with our own pen through what? Our own constitution, because the constitution. The constitution is the emanating document that brings you back to life because your people bring you back to life, no colonists can bring you back to life. The Metropolitan Council brings you back to life through a pen. Through the constitution that brings you back to life. This is the reawakening. You must understand that the constitution. Now restores the state. But you're not done then, now you gotta do what, accede to the treaties through the state. Then you're not done, what else you gotta do next? Deposit with the United Nations so they at least have it on the record, that way you're recognizing yourself, they're aware of you, only thing you do is give them notice. Because they're obligated to let you get back your trust. This is all about making a proper claim through statehood. To get our trust back under what? The triple principle of sovereignty and independence, which means what? State rights. What's the second principle, integrity of domains, which is what, a state and the states are trust. What's number three, economic liberty without inequality, that's our prosperity of that trust. All this based upon what? Moor's treaties. They're telling you the answers to the test, Moors, they're telling you the answers to the test. Okay, let's read section C, we're talking trustees, they got our stuff in the trust, let's read section C.
C, to encourage respect for human rights and for fundamental freedoms for all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion. And to encourage recognition of the inter- interdependence of the peoples of the world. And to D, to ensure equal treatment in social. And to D, to ensure equal treatment in social, economic, and commercial matters for all members of the United Nations and their nationals. And also equal treatment for the latter in the administration of justice. Without prejudice to the attainment of the foregoing objectives and subject to the provisions of Article eighty.
Okay, so the trustee, that's a long, it's several articles of trustee. Moors gotta go back and read more of these articles. It's about you. Okay. What is the definition of economics? The branch of knowledge. Moors gotta come back in the knowledge of statehood. Concern with the production, consumption, and transfer of wealth. Go ahead, mother.
So, the greatest transfer of wealth hasn't happened yet.
That's right.
It'll happen when the Moors stand up and claim their dominion.
That is correct. So your great reset is that the Moors coming back into independent states. And making a proper claim to the land, the law, and its wealth. Remember what I said. She controls the land, controls its laws, and its wealth. She who controls the land, sovereignty, independence, state rights, that controls the land, states control the land. Controls its laws, laws are what? Integrity of domains, domains is the law of the land. Which is your estate and your trust. And number three, economic liberty without inequality. That is what? Your wealth. So she who controls the land, controls its laws and its wealth. We have to control the land first. Before we can control the laws and its wealth. How do you control the land? State. How do you control the land? State. State, Moors. State. Rights indigenous people, Article five. Until then, they're gonna hold on to our vast estate and a trustee status until we make a competent claim. Why haven't we been able to make a competent claim? Let's talk about that. Here's why. Because Moors keep saying enforce the constitution. They keep saying enforce the constitution. But they're not comprehending what this constitution is about because the constitution is breadcrumbs. Article three, section two, diversity of state. Where's your state? Article six, section two, treaty supreme law of the land. Okay, go back and read the treaty. The treaty's about states. You go back and read the treaty, Act of Alcer- Act, Algeceris nineteen oh six. General provisions, chapter seven, talks about the instructions. It's constitution laws, ratification, and depository, all through statehood. Well, we've been so busy enforcing this that we haven't enforced it on ourselves. What's the second reason why? We've been studying local, state, municipal corporation statutes instead of studying international law. If we would study international law, we would have the answer to the test already. This is why I tell Moors to put this down for now. We'll come back and enforce their obligations to this constitution when we have our constitution. We'll do things in like manner. It's a chess game. It's in like manner. Colonists, Moors, we'll play chess. But the Moors don't have a constitution, what are you enforcing? You can't enforce them because nothing's in like manner. It's called equality. And Moors are maintaining what you call. Inequality. Because the game ain't equal because we didn't have no constitution. We didn't have a state to even have diversity of state. The Moors have been delaying their own justice. And until we start getting back into statehood, they're gonna hold on to our trust, literally. As trustees, they tell you right in front of your face. Rights indigenous people, tell you right in front of your face. They tell you, follow your brick road, go back to what? Article one. This is why I don't go past Article five. Moors, have you noticed I don't really go past Article five? Why? Because Moors ain't figured out the first five articles. Article one, indigenous people have the right to full enjoyment as a collective or individuals of all human rights and fundamental freedoms as recognized in the Charter of the United Nations. Most Moors read past Article one, they just zip right past, oh, that had nothing to do with me. And they tell you, go back, read the instructions. If the charter's talking about your trust. Let's continue. There were some other things I wanted to go over tonight, but I'm gonna save it for another time. We go over what's called. France versus United States of America. Which is the case concerning the rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. We're gonna go over that in the next class. Because I wanna go over a different document right now because this right here is gonna point out the triple principle. So we're gonna talk about that a little bit more in the next class. But let's jump to what they call Resolution fifteen fourteen so Moors can start understanding what are the obligations of the colonists to decolonize? And what are the obligations of the Moors to get back to our trust? Let's talk about it. Okay. As I said earlier, this is the declaration, the granting of independence to colonial countries and people. Moors have to research this to find, it's called Resolution fifteen fourteen, okay? General Assembly Resolution fifteen fourteen. And you'll see this XV ten-five of December fourteenth nineteen sixty. This was a pivotal moment. As it relates to the Charter of United Nations as a declaration. Because after nineteen sixty, this is when all the Africans who had countries and nations decided to become states. Because of this declaration, that must be understood. This was a pivotal moment. Based upon indigenous people or colonized people, Africa, China, South America, Central America. They all started utilizing this declaration. It's a powerful declaration. Moors gotta understand this. Okay, let's get right into the preamble. Remember, Moors, I always say you must study the preamble. You must understand the consciousness and the context before you even get to the articles. Most people open the declaration, suddenly they go straight to the articles. The ICJ judges always say, read the preamble. Why? Because they read the preamble. Moors want to establish consul court. You're gonna have judges. Your judges have an obligation to study the preamble first before they even get into the article. All Moors must understand that. All right, let's go ahead and read the preamble.
The General Assembly.
Okay, let's dig up a little bit.
The General Assembly, mindful of the determination proclaimed by the peoples of the world in the Charter of the United Nations.
Stop. We haven't got the first sentence. It's already talking about the United Nations. Moors will not get out of studying international law in the Charter of United Nations. It is what it is because the charter is already part and parcel to Moroccan law. So when you study the Charter of United Nations, guess what it is? You're studying a Moroccan document because it's based upon your trust. Okay, mother, if you could please start with.
Mindful of the determination proclaimed by the peoples of the world in the Charter of the United Nations to reaffirm faith in fundamental human rights, in the dignity and worth of the human person, in the equal rights of men and women and of nations large and small, and to promote a social progress, progress, and better standards of life and larger freedom.
Stop. Okay, so what have we already learned? They're talking about human person to the identified and talking about living people. Decolonization is about taking people from a dead status to a living status. They're making distinctions. You gotta catch it. That's why the preamble was important to understand. They're giving you the concept and the context. Listen. Mindful of determination proclaimed by the peoples of the world in the Charter of the United Nations. So it's telling you, go back and see your delegation authority order, which helps secure your rights as people to reaffirm faith in fundamental human rights. And the dignity and worth of the human persons. See, they didn't say person, they say human person. They're making distinctions in the equal rights of men and women. Now they solidify it, men and women and of nations large and small, right? Where'd they get that from? Large and small? United Nations Charter in the preamble. And to promote social progress and better standards of life and larger freedom. Let's continue.
Conscious of the need for the creation of conditions of stability and well-being and peaceful and friendly relations based on respect for the principles of equal rights and self-determination of all peoples. And of universal respect for and observance of human rights and fundamental freedoms for all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion.
Okay, so there they go. Talking about what? Respect for the principles. What are the principles? The triple principles. Let's continue.
Recognizing the passionate yearning for freedom in all dependent peoples and the decisive role of such peoples in the attainment of their independence.
Okay, so recognizing what? Moors want their freedom. But how do they get their freedom? Well, Moors need instructions. We've been colonized. So the declaration's been giving us instructions. This declaration gonna give you instructions on how to get your freedom. Let's continue.
Aware of the increasing conflicts resulting from the denial of the.
Impediments.
Impediments in the way of the freedom of such peoples which constitute a serious threat to world peace.
Stop. Right there is important. What's happening? There's an allegation happening here. Someone's creating impediment. Well, if this document about decolonization, then they're talking about the colonists creating impediment. Aware of the increasing conflicts resulting from the denial or impediments in the way of the freedom of such people. What people? Moors. Which constitute a serious threat to world peace. What's the world peace? That charter. And the treaties of peace and friendship. Because it's a violation, a breach of the treaty, and it's a breach of the charter. Let's continue.
Considering the important role of the United Nations in assisting the movement for independence and trust in non-self-governing territories.
Stop. Preamble. Considering the important role of the United Nations in assisting the movement for independent, independent states. Once you have the independent states, now you get back into what? Your trust. Of the non-self-governing territories. So there they go, talking about that trust again in a decolonization declaration. For non-self, non-self-governing territories. What are they talking about? That's Article seventy-three of the United Nations Charter. Let's continue. Recognizing.
Recognizing that the peoples of the world ardently desire the end of colonialism in all its manifestations.
That says enough in itself. Okay, let's continue.
Convinced that the, convinced that the continued existence of colonialism prevents the development of international economic cooperation impedes the social, cultural, economic develop- development of dependent peoples and militates against the United Nations ideal of universal peace.
Uh-oh, sound like these are more allegations, some impediment going on. But what are they talking about? Okay, convinced. So if they're convinced, that mean they got some evidence on some people. Some exhibits, some discovery documents, right? Okay, convinced that the continued existence of colonialism prevents the development of international economic cooperation. Impedes the social, cultural, and economic development. Why do they keep talking about this economic? Because it's the trust. Moors can't get it if someone's blocking us. Development of dependent peoples. So we're dependent people. Moors are dependent people right now. But yet we're coming back in various stages of it, development. Dependent people and milit- militates against the United Nations ideal of universal peace. So it's a violation of the charter and the, and the treaties. That's what they're talking about. You gotta see what they're talking about. Let's continue.
Affirming that peoples may, for their own need, for their own ends, freely dispose of their natural wealth and resources without prejudice to any obligations arising out of international economic cooperation based upon the principle of mutual benefit and international law.
Okay, there we go. They finally now telling you about the wealth. See how they exposing it? Affirming that peoples may, for their own ends, Moors, to their own ends, freely dispose of their natural wealth and resources without prejudice to any obligations arising out of international economic cooperation based upon the principle of mutual benefit and international law. Moors gotta study international law. What's happening? You see what's happening? Wealth. Wealth, the trust.
Believing that the process of liberat- liberation is irresistible and irreversible and that in order to avoid serious crises, an end must be put to colonialism and all practices of segregation and discrimination associated therewith.
Continue.
Welcoming the emergence in recent years of large number of independ- of dependent territories into freedom and independence and recognizing the increasingly powerful trends towards freedom in such territories which have not yet attained independence.
Stop. Now what's going on during this time nineteen sixty? Civil rights movement. Civil rights movement. Nineteen sixty, this declaration comes out. It comes out nineteen sixty. Guess who gets killed in nineteen sixty-three? Kennedy. Why? Because Kennedy controlled the pen of the executive branch. He could have easily now came and signed off on this declaration. Brought it back to the United States and say, through his House of Representatives and the Senate, brought this back and signed it into law. Kennedy at the time was trying to bring back the gold standard. And once this declaration came out, he was gonna sign this too. Next you know, he gets assassinated. Noble Dr. Lee is trying to bring back civics. Next you know, he gets assassinated July nineteen twenty-nine. Nineteen sixty-three, Kennedy gets assassinated. Who gets assassinated in nineteen sixty-five? Malcolm X, Ilmael Shabazz. Why did Ilmael Shabazz get assassinated? Because he was gonna go to the UN. He was looking for statehood. He was coming after the trust. Who gets killed next after Malcolm X? Ilmael Shabazz. Who's next? Martin Luther King. Why would Martin Luther King get killed? Because I thought he was all about civil rights for the black people. Because he recognized he had put his people backwards. And he said, you know what? Yeah, I'm gonna make some, but I'm sick of that. I'm gonna make this claim for the Moors at the UN, him and Malcolm, i.e. Ilmael Shabazz, were talking. They was both gonna go make that claim to the UN for what? Human rights violations, but they also knew that it was Moors. So they're gonna make that claim for the Moors to enforce those treaties? They're gonna enforce that United Nations Charter. This is nineteen sixties now. So Malcolm X gets killed, i.e. Ilmael Shabazz, the ill, he's a Mormon. Martin Luther King gets assassinated. Why? Because after he got civil rights passed, he immediately said, yeah, no, I'm, I'm not finished. I'm about to make a better claim than what I've done. Because he recognized it wasn't about civil rights. He had threw his people underneath the bus because it's about human rights. The charter and the, and the Declaration of Human Rights came out nineteen forty-eight. Nineteen forty-eight, human rights. But the United States calls it civil rights. Ain't got nothing to do with human rights. Because civil means civil leader mortus. And Martin Luther King knew that. That's why in his video said that we are refugees in our own homeland. He was telling the truth. He knew how to go make the claim. He was about to make that claim at the UN because him and Malcolm, i.e. Ilmael Shabazz, had already talked about it. Next you know, Martin Luther King gets assassinated. Why? Going to the UN. Guess who else gets killed? Another Kennedy.
When was that?
His little brother gets.
Sixty-eight?
Eight, I think it was sixty-eight, sixty-nine. So his little brother gets killed. Why? Because little brother don't pick up the torch of what big brother was trying to do to bring back the gold standard and go to UN and start ratifying those declarations. Anytime. People have tried to get the UN involved to make the proper claims. They've been assassinated. But that was back then. Now we got the internet. Nineteen ninety-one, everybody's. Nineteen ninety-one, everybody's Martin Luther King, everybody's Malcolm X, everybody's a Kennedy, cause everybody now has the power of the press. There's no more heads up state to go representative, now we have a body politic of moors talking about this around the world. United Nations has more presence around the world, people know more about the United Nations. The Africans exposed, hey, you go there, you, you might have some opportunities to get to rights, and that's what they did. The Africans were going to represent Malcolm and help him get those rights, Ilmael Shabazz as a moor, not as a black man. Let's continue, welcoming.
Welcoming the emergence in recent years of large number of dependent territories into freedom and independence. And recognizing the increasingly powerful trends towards freedom in such territories which have not yet attained independence. Convinced that all peoples have an inalienable right to complete freedom, the exercise of the sovereignty and the integrity of their national territory. Solemnly proclaims the necessity of bringing to a speedy and unconditional in colonialism, colonialism, not its forms and manifestations.
Okay, now we gonna get into the seven articles. And to this end. Alright, Article One.
The subjection of people.
Subjection, yeah, you're right.
The subjection of people to alien subj- subjugation. The domination and exploitation constitutes a denial of fundamental human rights. It is contrary to the Charter of the, of the United Nations and is. An impediment to the promotion of world peace and cooperation.
Okay, so this is the first article, you gotta really pay attention to what just happened. The subjection of peoples to alien subjugation. That means the United Nations Charter and all their General Assembly members. Knows the United States of America turned the moors into what? Aliens. See, moors just not learning this stuff, they've always known this stuff, the colonists have always known this stuff. And all the General Assembly members have always known that the United States of America turned the moors into aliens. In the Alien Act seventeen ninety-eight. Let's read again. Article One, the subjection of peoples to alien subjugation. Domination and exploitation constitutes a denial of fundamental human rights. Is contrary to the Charter of the United Nations, see, they keep talking about it? And is. An impediment to the promotion of world peace and cooperation, so it's an impediment to what? The treaties? That's what they talking about, world peace, treaties and the Charter. And it's keeping the moors from making the claim to their trust. Let's go to Article Two, there's only seven articles, we don't get through this, let's go.
All peoples have the right to self-determination, by virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status. And freely pursue their economic, social and cultural development.
Here we go again, Article Two. All peoples have the right to self-determination. What did we learn about self-determination? Well, that's in the preamble of the Charter, it's also in Article Fifty-five of the United Nations Charter. Right, it's also in Article Seventy-three of the Charter. Self-determination of peoples, what people they talking about? People in non-self-governing territories, and their territories are now in a trustee ship status. Why they keep talking about this economic, social, cultural development? That's Article Five of the rights indigenous people, that's why I keep showing it to people. It's repetitive, it's a correlation. Article Three.
Inadequacy of political, economic, social or educational preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence.
This is very powerful, listen. Inadequacy of political, inadequacy of what? Full statehood. Economic, social and educational preparedness should never serve as a pretext for delaying independence. Or, or the moors don't have a state, so we gonna delay them, no. The moors have a right in their varying stages of development. But the moors still have an obligation to start that process of their varying stages of development. But if moors remain negro, black and colored. They're not at, they're not at varying stages of development. If moors keep saying they're citizens of the United States of America, then they're not at varying stages of development, however. When a moor ratifies the constitution, now you're at varying stages of development, development of what? Politics, statehood. The constitution is the first step. That is, after you know that you have a nationality. Let's continue.
Four, all armed action or repressive measures of all kinds directed against dependent peoples. Shall cease in order to enable them to exercise peacefully and freely, and freely, their right to complete independence. And the integrity of their national territory shall be respected.
National territory, moors are coming back and making proper claims to their territories through statehood, it's the only way, let's continue.
Five, immediate steps shall be taken in trust in non-self-governing territories or all other territories. Which have not yet attained independence, to transfer all powers to the peoples of those territories. Without any conditions or reservations in accordance with the freely expressed will and desire. Without any distinction as to race, creed or color, in order to enable them to enjoy complete independence and freedom.
This is a powerful article. Immediate steps, immediate steps, immediate steps shall be taken in trust. In non-self-governing territories. Of all other territories which have not yet attained independence. To transfer all power to the peoples of those territories. Without any conditions or reservations in accordance with their freely expressed will and desire. Without any distinction as to race, creed or color, color, that's a French word, color. What's color mean? When you look it up in the dictionary, it means what? Too high. In order to enable them to enjoy a complete independence and freedom. These are obligations. Moors are obligated to come back into government. Colonists are obligated not to do anything. That would create inequality, they are obligated to the treaties and the Charter. Article Six.
Any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity and territorial integrity of a country is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations.
Mm-hmm. Any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity of the territory integrity of a country. Is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations, what are they telling you right here? The United Nations Charter is all about that trustee shit. Because they have an obligation as the trustees of the Moroccan treaties. Seven.
All states shall observe faithfully and strictly the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the Present Declaration on the Basis of Equality. Non-interference in, in the internal affairs of all states. And respect for the sovereign rights of all peoples and their territorial integrity.
That's right. Did you hear what just happened? They ended by saying these indigenous people, when they come back and statehood, when the moors got their state, listen. All states shall observe faithfully and strictly the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the Present Declaration on the Basis of Equality, why? Cause it's about what? Economic liberty without inequality. The economics can be no inequality, everything must be about equality, listen. Basis of equality, non-interference in the internal affairs of all states, so when moors have this, their states, can be what? Non-interference. In the internal affairs of all states. And respect for the sovereign rights of all peoples, not persons. And their territorial integrity. So when the moors have their states, your state rights will prevail. That's what moors gotta understand. There's plenty of declarations, but what's the problem? Moors been so busy studying the constitution of the United States of America, we haven't been studying international law. Even though constitutions are related to international law. We've been studying local, state statutes. Instead of studying international law, declarations, conventions and the Charter. The Charter tells you everything you need to know, the declarations tell you everything you need to know, the treaties tell you everything you need to know. But what have moors been doing? Doubling out, doubling down on state statutes. And enforcing this, and if you was truly enforcing this, you'd have been following the instructions of the treaties, so you need to put this down. And pick this up. And enforce your constitution. Get back into state rights. That way you can have what? Non-interference in the internal affairs of your state. I end with that. It's long.